Committee of the whole is now in order. I'm welcome to everybody. I just want to go over a few ground rules. Is that at for a committee of the whole, according to our council rules, I get to limit public debate during the committee of the whole and I want to keep that limitation to a minimum. So I ask you if you come with a very large group, if you could pick your three best people to say three different things and to get up and make your comments, that'll help us along. We've got a very, very long agenda today. There should be some yellow slips of paper back there on the table. My understanding is they've had to go get some more that we've run out of them. If you've already taken one of these and wish to speak, just give it to the clerk up here and we'll take care of this during the Boyd Forum. And the Boyd Forum, I'm going to ask council that if you have any comments for that, that we reserve that towards the end of our meeting so that we can get to the business of council. And during the Boyd Forum, I ask that people that get up to speak to try to limit your remarks as closely as possible to one minute. Thank you.
Mr. President, I do hope that the people understand that the yellow slips are just for Boyd Forum, that each item they can just speak without the yellows.
Yes, that's correct. Yes. And on each item, you will be able to speak on that, but for the Boyd Forum, that's what we're going into now. Yellow slips are just for that. Mr. Steve Emory.
Good afternoon. There wasn't an agenda on the table, so I hope that my comments are not out of line. I came here to speak in support of Occupy and the difficulties that they've been having with the city and hope that you would understand why I believe, and according to an online poll, the majority of the people in this community support them. Most of us who have 401K know that over $7 trillion in wealth was wiped out. The investment agencies that rate investments gave these derivatives, which they had no idea what was in them, AAA rating status. The banks got bailed out with hundreds of billions of dollars of money from taxpayers and which within days they turned around and gave out hundreds of millions of dollars in bonuses. Why here in Florida and especially in Scambia County, average people are scraping by by their fingernails, just trying to make ends meet. And even during good times, the Scambia was the hole in the doughnut. We never really saw any economic prosperity for the 99% who live here.
Okay, Mr. Emory, thank you.
I'm going to close up quickly, Chief.
Now, your one minute is up. Thank you.
All right.
Oh, Mr. John Kero.
I'm John Kero. Thank you for taking my comments. I'm a native of Pensacola. My ancestors came here in 1698 with the first Spanish. I love the city. I've been watching the Occupy movement also. Even though I'm a registered Republican, I support them absolutely. I do not understand why you're harassing them like you are. I thought they were very orderly when I saw their camp, which was wiped out. And I don't understand, I think that you're just doing what other places are doing. I'm sorry to see it. I hope you decide to vote against this, even though I'm sure you've all decided to pass it right now. But we're watching your vote and we're going to remember when the election comes. And trust me, I vote and a lot of my friends do too. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. John Dennison.
Hi, I've lived here for 14 years. I haven't had a chance to read this new ordinance that I've heard about, but it seems to me like y'all have an ordinance that is on the board that would make it illegal for within people in Pensacola city limits to not have blankets, sleeping bags, newspaper, cardboard boxes, any type of basic rudimentary shelter. And I can't figure out if this is supposed to be a thinly veiled swipe at the Occupy movement. And if it is, it's not going to work. These people aren't going to go away. If this is an attempt to somehow deal with the city's homeless problem, I have to really question the sanity and the morality of it. This will not solve this city's homeless problems. I have worked downtown Pensacola for about five years now. I get annoyed as anybody else when somebody comes up to me and asks me if they could bum a cigarette, bum a dollar. I've heard every sob story in the book. I get it. But people to survive need four basic things. They need air, they need water, they need food, and they need shelter. To deny somebody a blanket, a sleeping bag, the tent issue, you know, whatever, I understand there's different legalities for that, but to tell somebody that they cannot even throw a simple blanket over themselves, try and keep warm on these nights? I challenge any councilperson that wants to vote on this measure to come out here, anywhere in this city, and spend a night without a blanket, spend a night without a sleeping bag. And if you can do that and think that this is a good thing to put somebody else through for our three months, our three cold months out of the year, then by all means, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, it wasn't in relation to him, it's in general. Just because of the Boyd Forum, that if there's an agenda item to remind the members of the audience that they can speak during that agenda item, Boyd Forum is not designed for those issues.
Absolutely. And our former president here, President DeWes, thank you, she's absolutely right. This was really generated for new items that are coming up. And I had thought about that, but these people have shown up for this and I just may limit the debate during the discussion on the agenda item, okay? No, sir, we've got Ms. Monica Stone.
Hi, my name is Monica. I'm a Pensacola resident. I came down here to also speak about the proposed prohibiting of camping ordinance as well as the misuse of restroom ordinance. From my perspective, although I do have a house, this is seeking to criminalize homelessness and poverty in our city. It not only makes no sense from a political perspective, but it's also counter to American values related to fairness and justice. The moral imperative to care for the neediest among us and preserve and protect the human dignity of all people is a deeply entrenched American value. It's reflected in the religious beliefs and the practices of Americans of diverse faiths and in our most sacred political writings and foundational documents. The trend toward criminalizing homelessness, rather than working to care for and empower people who are poor, threatens to undermine this deeply held cultural value that has bound Americans together throughout history. The Declaration of Independence and the United States Constitution state, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator within certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and promote the general welfare of all our nation's people." Language such as this demonstrates that providing for each other and respecting human dignity are fundamental to who we are as American people. Thank you.
Hi, I just wanted to ask why the council decided that was so important, that park rules are more important to enforce than banking regulation and the Occupy movement against that? Also that, you know, taking away from people that have nothing is just going to force them into more crimes. And I know that the prison system makes a lot of money for a lot of people, but I just don't think that that's the way that this country needs to be going. And I think that Pensacola is making a huge mistake by trying to push these through.
Thank you.
Hi, it's Janice Spanos. Thank you for letting me address the council. I too find it a little disturbing that the council will even look at these kind of ordinances that are obviously designed to penalize people that are already impoverished. Houselessness is not a crime and it should not be a crime in Pensacola. It does seem that it is targeted at the Occupy movement. We moved from MLK Plaza to here by invitation, took down the tents by directive, and moved to the corner, as you wished. But to push forward ordinances to penalize the homeless and the poor in this community, to punish people for standing up and exercising their civil liberties, I think is immoral and very, very sad.
Thank you.
Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press, or the right of the peaceful people to peacefully assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. This is the second time, Sam, since you've been president, that you've started to limit people's opportunity to come forward. I'm not speaking to the rest of the council. This is the second time since you've been president that you've tried to limit the opportunity of people to come forward and petition their government for a redress of grievances? And you made a vow and signed an oath that you would protect this constitution? And people have a right to come forward and express themselves without? Would you do that? Would you say only three Republicans can speak or only three Baptists can speak? I don't think you would. And I don't think that this is fair. And I have something very important to talk to that I know a bunch of other people do. And I don't want to lose my temper, but this is sick.
Okay, sir, thank you. Mr. Michael Kimbrel.
So nice to see all of y'all again. Since I only have a minute, I'm going to be really brief and kind of skip over a lot of the statistics that I have. But these come from the National Law Center on Homeless and Poverty out of their new report that they released just this November. And I figure if I can't, you know, win you over with your heart, maybe I can win you over with your pocketbook. Because Utah's largest homeless shelter, the Road Home, found the annual cost for a person in permanent supportive housing is about $6,100 per year. The county jail is $25,500. The state prison is $35,000. And a state mental hospital is $146,730. Those are staggering compared to what it would be to just house someone in a homeless shelter. And I think that instead of criminalizing homeless people, we ought to be trying to house them and help them. Because criminalizing them only makes it harder for them to get out of homelessness. And just so you know, some of the people that you are affecting, 50% of HIV/AIDS victims are homeless or at immediate risk of homelessness. African-Americans make up 12% of our overall U.S. population, but make up over 40% of the homeless population. Homeless individuals are twice as likely to be veterans than individuals in the general population. 39% of homeless individuals suffer from serious mental illness.
Okay, Mr. Kimbrel, we're going to have to just wrap it up.
Okay. Well, I highly suggest all of y'all, before you make a decision, read this report. It just came out this November. Has a lot of great information.
Yeah, I would just like to make a quick comment. You all will have an opportunity to speak again when these ordinances come up for discussion. So the purpose of the Board Forum is just a quick one-minute, tell us what your problem is. And then when these come up for discussion on council, you will have a more opportunity to speak for a longer period of time. I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay, now I've got one final Boyd Forum.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, you don't. I'm conceding my one minute as my appropriate time to speak is when the ordinance comes before the Board.
Okay, sir, thank you. Okay. We have no action before council, but the mayor has quite a bit put forth. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Barker, please state your name again, please.
Amanda Vanderwall. I was wondering if maybe if like the lawyers and the bankers that come here, if I was wearing a suit, wouldn't everything be more important or would you listen anymore? I wanted to thank Dr. Pratt for standing up. And also, the banks have no problem charging $35,000 in another $300.
You've got to stay on topic here.
And another $3,500.
You're out of order.
When they already get 2.09% of the $5 million they're asking for.
Please take your seat. Chief, would you remove her, please? Thank you.
Seriously? Okay. Thought this was America. Guess I'm wrong. Why do I have to leave? This is a public forum.
Yes.
How was I off topic?
I'll clear the room.
Go ahead.
Okay. Any other discussion? Item number three.
Mr. President, the third item on the agenda is creating Section 8 Tac 1, Tac 22 of the City Code prohibiting camping on public property. The recommendation is that the city council adopt the proposed ordinance creating Section 8 Tac 1, Tac 22 of the City Code to prohibit camping as defined on public property in the city limits.
It's the committee's pleasure. We do approve. There is a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers.
Well, I definitely will not support this ordinance. It's very clear to me that this ordinance targets one group of citizens and those citizens I believe there are certain provisions in this ordinance I could support, such as cooking over an open flame or fire out of doors. However, in parks, we do provide people with the ability to use open flame cooking, I believe, in some parks. Setting up tents, bathing in public. However, item C, 1C, sleeping out of doors under one of the following conditions: using a sleeping bag, a top and/or covered by material such as bedroll, cardboard, newspaper, or inside some form of temporary shelter. I just find it just absolutely, quite frankly, disgusting that a person who is homeless, who has no place to sleep, can't even sleep under a piece of newspaper, is incredible to me. I have worked for 30 years with the homeless, first as a legal services attorney, and I still continue to work with people with disabilities. There are a lot of people who have disabilities who are homeless. It is one of the major causes of homelessness. And I think that this ordinance, as written, is unconstitutional. I think it is overbroad and I will not support it. If you can go back to the drawing board and draft this so that it is clearly not targeted to a specific group of individuals, I might be able to support it. The other thing is referring people to private shelters. I work with a lot of people who often need shelter. It is very difficult to get shelter on a sustained basis. I've had the good fortune of living in Washington, D.C., Nashville, Tennessee, and Louisville, Kentucky, who have great resources for the homeless. I do not find that the case here in Pensacola. The shelter, there is not adequate shelter for the homeless here in Pensacola. And I will not support this ordinance. And I beg council, do not support this ordinance in its present form. And I think it's ironic that this ordinance, I believe, was originally passed back in 1968 to prohibit the setting up of tent cities to replicate the resurrection city that Martin Luther King was probably shot and killed over. And here we are today, doing the same thing, targeting. This would never, this ordinance would never have come up had it not been for Occupy Pensacola, bringing these types of issues to the attention of the public. And this ordinance goes way too far and I will not support it. And I beg you, do not go in this direction. Tell the city attorney to go back and redraft this ordinance so that it does not single out people who are homeless. Thank you.
Mr. Gerald's.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. And, you know, that is my position exactly. I agree that the ordinance is too broad and far-reaching. It is a document that, to me, is something that is presented to us for consideration, debate, and modification where necessary. But as it is today, I could not and will not support it at all. I believe that it's important that not only do the citizens have an opportunity to weigh in on it, but also council needs to look at it and see what things we really need. And Councilmember Myers referenced an ordinance that was created in 1968 to try to prevent the start of tent cities in and around our cities. And that ordinance, from what I understand, has never been used and was found to be totally unnecessary and ridiculous, and we never even used it. So we have to look at what we're putting in place if we're going to be able to enforce it and expect the citizens to cooperate with us. We need to fine-tune it. Let's take a good look at it. And I certainly hope I agree with Councilmember Myers that it should not go forward today in its present form. We need to look at it and make sure that we're making an intelligent decision so that both the citizens and the council and others can live with it. And I'll close by saying, I too am interested in trying to find a way that we can make better provisions for homeless people because they're not going away. They don't have any place to go. So the point is, if we're going to do something to them, with them, or about them, I do believe that we have a responsibility to take some actions, some steps, to do something, to provide, you know, places for them to go. And I noticed, I think it was either Santa Rosa County that opened a shelter, I believe, last week when the temperatures dipped a little bit. And I do know that for a fact that in New York City, during sub-zero temperatures, that shelters were provided. So if we're going to do something, let's look at a way that we can improve the quality of life for all of the people in the city of Pensacola and especially those who are less fortunate than some of us. Thank you.
Anybody on this side? Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public here. I've got two cards already before me. Mr. Jeff, looks like Henry.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, city council, for allowing us to speak. I represent a ministry, it's a not-for-profit organization called Nothing Lost Outreach, and we minister to 50 to 100 homeless people every Sunday. We're able to get clothing, showers, a meal, hot meal. And there's 10 churches, 10 ministries, and one business that's involved in this together. And we just, we are here today to represent our friends who we know personally and care deeply about. And we would not like to see being homeless, we would not like to see that become a crime. And so we are here to represent them today. We're here to represent Jesus Christ. And I don't know any of you, but I feel that many of you, some of you may be Christians. And I don't see how you could possibly vote for this with any type of, it would be a complete lack of compassion for people that are hurting. So thank you for hearing us today. And we are all for a solution, sir, to the problem and not to turn this into a crime. Thank you.
And I just wanted to thank you, sir, for the work that you do in the community. Thank you. Mr. Joshua Walnifer.
Hi there, thank you. I serve as pastor of Klondike Baptist Church here in Pensacola, Florida. Also serve on the Board of Directors with Nothing Lost Outreach, which, as Jeff said, is a 501(c)(3) here that is serving many people in the city of Pensacola, those less fortunate who are on the brink.
Reverend, just one moment.
Sure, absolutely.
These were really just for the Board Forum. It does help me in being able to call and kind of organize and give some form to this discussion. But really, all you'll need to do is just line up or stand up after when visitor sits down. So, all right, go ahead, Reverend. I'm sorry.
No, it's just fine. We do serve many constituents. Many of our clients are from the city of Pensacola, those who are less fortunate, on the brink of homelessness, those who are homeless. We come and pick them up and bring them to our facility to serve them consistently each week and throughout the week at different occasions. This ordinance, as it is right now, is said to be given and proposed by our mayor for the aesthetics, the sanitation, and the public health and safety of the citizens. And to me, the last two, the public health and safety, I think, is very much an issue. But I think we're worrying about the wrong public health and safety if we are going to restrict with this ordinance the ability for people to have blankets, sleeping bags, everything that was already stated, and I won't rehearse all of that. What I'd like to do is basically just ask the city council from the constituency we have of churches and members who are volunteering their time is to go back and reconsider this ordinance, consider it in such a way that we could, instead of trying to target a certain people group, which is the homeless, and I will remind you, 1/3 of the homeless in our nation are veterans. Many of them were on the front lines in war. And that is very true here in Pensacola. If you spend time with them, as we do, they fit either in that category, the category of mental illnesses or substance problems. And friends, we weep with them every week. Some of them are trying hard. And this will criminalize it. And what it will do, and I hope you got my email that I sent earlier, and I'm not going to rehearse everything that I wrote you, but what it will do is two things. Either if we pass this ordinance, we will pass on the problem and the pain of these individuals to other cities and counties at the best. That's the best that this will do, is pass on pain and problems. At the worst, we are going to contribute to their demise. And that was a reality last year with the cold weather. Many individuals lost their lives because of that. And at this time of the year, we would ask for compassion. We would ask that this council could study this issue in greater detail. And we are willing, at the Nothing Lost Outreach, to do whatever we can to serve the council and serve the city to help to fix the problem without criminalizing the weakest among us. So I thank you for your time. And please feel free to let us know if we can do anything to help you.
Thank you, Reverend. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Katie Krasinski. Never have been homeless or even close to being homeless. I was very callous about the whole population, people that were living behind my building and over behind in Maritime Park, until I got to know them and realized where they're coming from. We have people who lost everything in Katrina who moved over here, a woman who was widowed a month before, did not know her insurance wasn't paid, lost everything she worked for her whole life, and now you want to take away her blanket? They will freeze to death and they will die. That's it. That's what not giving them a blanket or something to cover themselves will do. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
George Pope. Veteran, I am not homeless and I am a part of Occupy. I don't see the movement as a homeless, religious, charitable organization. I see it as a freedom of speech or constitutional right. And we have the right to assemble, to speak, and to educate one another. And I would find this ordinance that y'all are bringing out is an attack on the way that America is designed to operate. And anybody that would vote for it, I would call un-American. It's simple, simple dynamics. But I just want to make my point, this is not about homelessness. This is about restructuring America, giving it back to the people, and taking it out of big-money corporations. of big-money corporations and banks' hands. I lost a home in foreclosure. I never missed a payment. They out-lawyered me. They did economic psychology. They said, "Call this state, that state," whatever, wherever. And these are the problems that millions of Americans are dealing with today. And that's what Occupy, to me, is about, is dealing with these big issues, not just homelessness and whatnot. But I do—I have sympathy to them, no doubt. I'm a Christian. But I just wanted to stand my ground and say, as a part of Occupy, it's not about being homeless and accepting charity. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Dubuson.
Thank you for allowing us to speak again. This ordinance concerns me for a variety of reasons. First off, I think it is overreaching and far-reaching beyond just the immediacy, which seems to be reflected by the Occupy issue. I believe we had a homeless problem before Occupy brought it to our attention. I believe it continues. But that is not the only thing that I see as a problem with this. Number one, the homeless thing, we need an ad hoc committee to work diligently, expediently, and with every sense of resource that we have to create some solutions, because tents are not the solutions to the homelessness. It is going to be a growing problem because the economy is not bouncing back, as we know. We're in for a three-to-five-year turnaround at best. So I would really recommend that the council appoint everyone possible who has had any experience. And I will not serve on any of your other committees, but this is one I will serve on, because when I lived in Denver, I ran Capitol Hill Community Center, which was where the homeless community of Denver came when they needed reference. And as was said earlier, the lack of bed space for the homeless in the shelters is the problem. It also costs them to be in the shelters after a certain period of time. We don't have restrooms. We don't have water fountains. We don't have basic human resources for anyone who does not have a home available for tourists or homeless. That's another place that we need to look at improving the quality of life in our community, which would help assist in the homeless as they move forward. But getting back to the tent ordinance, you're gonna preclude Native Americans who might want to host a pow-wow. You're gonna preclude Boy Scouts who might want to host something. You're gonna preclude any nature-lover groups that want to have things. So you're creating an ordinance that says to everyone, "Don't come enjoy the very thing that we are so proud of, our environment." We should create a tent park somewhere in Pensacola. Create legal spaces where those who love to tent and who want to be in the outdoors can legally do so. And if people can't afford to pay a fee, let's create a work situation. Set up a food garden, and if you go and hope for two hours, you can pitch your tent in one of our spaces. I mean, get creative in how we facilitate these solutions. These people who are in need of a place for their tent are willing to work. They come all the time knocking on my door to ask, "Ms. Dubuson, do you need your yard rake? You know, do you need any work done? Can I wash your car?" They are looking for ways to get money, but no one has money to just throw out these days. So I would really encourage counsel to look at creating opportunities for short-term bartering for those who are in a bind. Look at long-term solutions for those who are in chronic situations that we can somehow support. Respect our veterans. Let's work with the federal government, with all the federal buildings—
Ms. Dubuson, just stick to the ordinance, though, right now.
Okay. The tent ordinance, as it is, to me, will not solve the problem, and it is far overreaching. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Messer, two things that you raised there. Is there anything about this ordinance that if, let's say, a group of Native Americans came and wanted to camp at the Maritime Park that would keep them from being able to do that, would it be possible for an event permit to allow that to happen, even with this ordinance? Or the Boy Scouts, for that matter?
I want to respond to you, Mr. Chairman, and also to Councilwoman Myers. And I would at least partially respectfully defer to the mayor's office, because, as you note from the committee memorandum, that ordinance didn't come through my office. So I haven't studied it, studied it, I didn't prepare it. But, you know, I'm fond of sticking my neck out, and I would believe that the answer to your question would be yes, those sorts of events will be covered by a permit. But otherwise, I would defer to the mayor's office.
Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you look at section two, you'll see that—and I quote, "Camping is prohibited on all public property, except as may be specifically authorized by the appropriate governmental authority."
Okay, that answers my question. All right, sir.
I honestly can't even believe I'm in this building talking about this. This is bonkers. This ordinance is—it's a crime against humanity. There's a problem when one individual or group of individuals have the power to tell people, "You cannot have a blanket outside on the planet Earth." It's a big problem. That's—you're taking logic and turning it on its head. You're attacking the people of your community that you say you care about. Well, you know, this ordinance, in a week, it could be one of your family members that's on the streets, and then you're gonna have the police arresting your family members. It could be you, you know, because the economy's so great right now. So you're gonna feel, you know, real smart if, you know, someone in your family gets arrested for having a big fuzzy blanket trying to stay warm, maybe on Christmas Day. I mean, this is just—all this red tape to try and say, "No, you can't have a tent," like it's ridiculous. You can't have a blanket. You can't push the homeless to the sea because homelessness is not going to go away. But when we're talking about making a loan for $5 million from a bank while you're trying to attack the homeless, that's not logical. That's not rational. I talked about it all day. $5 million can open up a lot of vacant homes, open up a lot of shelters, safe houses for abused women and children, you know, sexual abuse victims, domestic housewives—
Stay on topic, sir.
Abuse—that's very on topic.
It's not about a $5 million loan. This is about—
It's very much about that, because all these problems are—it's—we're being governed, and we're not having a chance to participate in—
You're out of order, sir.
I'm not out of order at all. You're out of order.
Father Monk?
This is all out of order. You're out of order. City Council is out of order. I can't even get eye contact. None of us can get eye contact.
Okay, that's fine. Father Monk?
I remember a discussion, very similar to this, about tents and vagrants and people living in disgusting means, and that we just needed to get them inside. And so Andrew Jackson just sort of moved them across the plane. Remember that? You know? And I think it's just very interesting that this country was built on a bunch of guys riding on horses, living outside under the stars. We romanticize it. We make movies about it. But then we want to criminalize it in practicality. And I think that this ordinance, not only is it targeted towards the poor, but I think that it will be used in such a way that you're not gonna arrest some businessman if he's lying out in Plaza Ferdinand on a nice, warm summer day with a blanket down. You know, we're creating an opportunity for people to be targeted based upon their social status, and that is about as un-American as I can imagine. The fact that this ordinance is even being brought before this council is problematic. And it is done under the guise of—about health and safety. Who's health and safety? I think the burden exists on the mayor to show us whose health and whose safety is in danger with this ordinance. Two years ago, we had 14 days of under 30-degree weather. And I remember one particular individual who froze to death during that time. His name was Red. And Red was sleeping in a tent. His tent was next to a fire. He had a sleeping bag. His sleeping bag was lined with newspapers, and he froze to death. You know, and I know the city likes to talk about liability and what type of liability issues would end up coming up from an ordinance like this. But I would hold every single one of you that voted for this ordinance liable if someone freezes to death this winter if this ordinance passes. This council would have arrested Marion Joseph around this time of year for being vagrants. And then you would have called DCF and had the Christ child taken off. It had a wholly different edifice that we would be using to remind ourselves on Sunday morning. I think it's funny, you know, I went to the council website to pull everyone's email addresses, and it was real neat. You know, everyone had their churches that they go to. I think it's funny that so many people proudly worship a homeless man on Sunday, and then you want to arrest him on Monday. We actually did. We crucified him. And I would consider it the exact same thing if this council goes forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Father Monk.
Hi, my name's Gary Lowry. I let Father Monk go first because he's a lot more eloquent than I am. First of all, I'd like to say, Mr. President, I apologize earlier for referring to you as the mayor. I didn't mean to demote you.
Your apologies accepted, sir.
I am a disabled veteran. I also spent nearly three years on the streets of Pensacola as a homeless person. And today, I run a small ministry passing out clothes, tents, blankets, to those who are still out. I'm in constant contact with those who are in the woods, who are on park benches, who are underneath overpasses. And as Father Monk said a minute ago, what I see this ordinance becoming—and I humbly beg you to either table this or scrap it until you can study it and come up with some better plan, because I see the far-outreaching problems that this program will not become something to provide better sanitary or better living conditions around this town. In fact, actually, what you will be doing is taking the over 3,000 members of the homeless community from the Pensacola, Escambia County area, and placing their lives at jeopardy and, in a lot of ways, in your hands. What we've come to today, ladies and gentlemen of the council and Mr. Mayor, is a situation that I believe has been caused by or led by many of the local businesses in this area. And with the local business and people, many of those who helped elect you and now support your administration, have basically come to you and have labeled you as the new Heimlich-Hemmler and asked you to come up with a new final solution to the homeless situation here in Pensacola. As I told you before, I lived on the streets of Pensacola, and Pensacola has never been a homeless-friendly area. And today, matters are even worse. If you pass this ordinance, you will give the police department the authority to walk in to anyone's living area, anyone's sleeping area, burn, trash, tear down, however you want to word it, their camping area, and leave them out in the cold with no protection at all. Now, there have been a lot of possible solutions to come up here. I'd just like to ask you this. You continue to come up with these ordinances about the homeless. Just where do you want them to go? Here's some choices I have for you. You can put them in jail.
No, no, let's not go there. This is about the ordinance itself.
Okay.
And I'll let you go on a little bit longer than I should, so I'm just gonna ask—
I apologize. I'll cut it off here very shortly. Okay? At this time of the year, as has been alluded to before, we're all supposed to be celebrating the Christmas spirit. Our Lord Jesus Christ tells us that the poor will be with us for always and commands us, not ask us, but commands us, to care for them, and even tells us that, in fact, saying that, "When you look for Me, look into the faces of the poor and the hungry, and there you will see Me." But yet, instead, we want to take away their basic needs for shelter, and especially at this particular time of the year when the temperature's going down and gonna stay there, we are, as I said before, putting people's lives in jeopardy and in danger. And I pray and I plead for this council to scrap and shred this ordinance before something worse happens.
Thank you, Mr. Lowery.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to thank Mr. Lowery for his service. And I know his heart is in the right place and his words are very kind. Without the mayor bringing this forward and two councilmembers having the courage of making a motion in a second, none of this discourse or discussion would be happening. So to stand and offend my sensibilities and question my faith, question my patriotism, and question where my heart may lie is offensive, and it will not get us anywhere. I urge you, if you want your voice to be heard and you want us to understand—me, I speak for myself, not the rest of council—don't come in here and do that. This isn't about my faith. My faith is deeply intact. Do not question it again. Do not compare the mayor and his administration to the Third Reich. That is beyond offensive. That is not the place for this. This is a discourse between the people in this community and this council that's trying to make a decision that is the best for all involved. We represent the entire community. It's not that everything that has been said by Occupy Pensacola falls on deaf ears. We have nine different opinions on Occupy Pensacola, but that's not what we're discussing here. We're discussing how we maintain order in our community. Please do not offend and say the things that you have said, and by all means, avoid personalities. I've been personally attacked for my words, for trying to stand up and say, "What is it that we can do for you?" And I want this conversation to continue. I made a second on this motion, so we could have this discussion. Thank you.
And my— Just a moment. My apologies to the councilwoman for not calling him down on that. I was thinking in the broader free speech reign, but I'm not gonna tolerate that from anyone else. Will Mr. Steve Embry raise his hand back there, please? Okay, Steve, you're the cutoff for this, okay? You'll be the last one to speak, so—thank you. Mr. Messer.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, you have it under control now. I was just gonna echo Councilwoman DeWes's comments, but if you have it under control, I won't say anything.
Okay.
But I'm willing to if you don't.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And I echo Councilwoman DeWes. I've been up here, and I feel that I have been accused of being a non-Christian against the homeless, and I have been accused of many things that are just not true. I made the motion, and it was seconded. For you all that don't understand Roberts rules, that brings—
All right. That's it, sir.
You're not helping your cause by doing that. We're trying to have an adult discussion here, and we're trying to do what's right, as Ms. DeWes said, for all of the city of Pensacola. You have to understand that we get calls about the issue that's before us now from people that are on the other side, and we have to weigh all things out and try to make the best decision that we can make. This isn't a personal decision for me, but this is a decision where I have to listen to all people. I hear the folks in the audience, but to be accused of being a non-Christian and to be against the homeless is just not correct. And I take offense to that, too, and I totally support what Councilwoman DeWes said. But to come in here and accuse us of different things is not helping your cause at all. This ordinance is—there's ordinances such as this on the books other places. We haven't passed this ordinance yet. We are discussing it at this time. So I'd appreciate calmness and also a courtesy to everyone at this table, because these are very tough decisions that we're trying to make. I'll afford you that courtesy. I expect it in return.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name's Alistair Mackenzie. I am not here representing Occupy Pensacola. What I am here today to talk to you about is this no-camping ordinance. I don't think it's constitutional— I don't think it's constitutional, number one, despite however it closely may be mirrored to Joel versus City of Orlando. I think it's unacceptable. I know that you are not the ones who proposed it, so I could have saved y'all all that breath about calling you non-Christians by saying, I'm well aware that the person who put this forward is the mayor and his staff. And the mayor is not here to say why he put this before you or why not. But I can give you two inclinations as why.
I don't need to hear the motive of the mayor on this, sir. Speak to the ordinance itself, please.
Sir, when we're dealing with discrimination, motive is very important.
Well...
So I would like to say that one could easily interpret the no camping ordinance coming before you on two aspects. Number one, and to me, most personally disturbing, because as was said by someone much smarter and wiser than myself, the value of a society is determined by the way it treats its least. That's not an exact quote, so sorry. But what you can draw from this is, one, why is this ordinance before you? Because camping's suddenly a problem? No, it's before you because 8-1-7 is not a law that has ever been enforced. And so now they're trying to find something to enforce against Occupy Pensacola. Number two, it's a blatant attack on the homeless, who have no other options. If you want to do something productive, then instead of pass this ordinance, why not form a council on the homeless? Why not get an open shelter for people that's funded by the city in private? You know, maybe you can make some sort of deal with local churches as well, invest some money in it. But just passing an ordinance like this is just impeccable. I mean, welcome to Christmas here. We are in the Christmas season, and I do believe that Jesus was born outside in a manger baby with a cover over him. Okay? He was homeless his entire life. And we can't forget that what you do as a legislative body is make determinations about value, not only economic determinations. And the mayor has put before you something that calls for a question of values. And so I would ask you, I don't know what your values are. I know you didn't put this forward. I would ask you to look and say, what is important to you? Where do your values lie? Do your values lie in helping the least of your society? Or do your values lie with trying to improve the aesthetic quality of a city? What's really more important in the end? You know, when you're there at the end reflecting back on your life, you want to ask yourself these questions. Did I do what was right? And this is a question of right or wrong. Also, on part of this is the roadway safety ordinance that the mayor has decided to impose.
No, we're not going there.
This is part and parcel of the war on the poor.
You're out of order. Speak to this ordinance.
Okay. Well, this ordinance is overbroad, okay? And if it's not overbroad, then it's also viewpoint discrimination. And what I mean by that is it's specifically selecting a class of individuals out in order to attack them for being something that they cannot change. It is an immutable characteristic they have, and I would hope that city council would have the wisdom to tell the mayor to take this ordinance back. And yet you're not going to pass it, because you care about human beings. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi. My name is Bill Paul, and I'm not here to defend the homeless, because they've been defended very eloquently tonight. What I'm here to talk about is freedom of speech. I think it's very clear, and it was expressed by one of the council members, that this is really about Occupy Pensacola. Everyone is aware that the tents were taken away, the sleeping bags were taken away, and now people are standing on the corner, sitting in chairs 24/7 with blankets, huddling together trying to keep warm to keep the protest going. The beginning of the Iraq War protests were nationwide, worldwide, the largest anti-war protests since Vietnam, and nobody knows about them. The 24-hour, seven-day-a-week protest is what broke through the corporate media wall. And that is why there is so much animosity towards that aspect of this protest. And this is about politics. This is about freedom of speech, and that's why I'm here, and I hope you take that into consideration.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Embry.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to have this opportunity to speak before this council. Many of you know me and know that I will never insult the integrity of a council member. You also know that I am anything but homeless, though I'm not about to give my Broad Street rating. What I wanted to talk about is what you're doing. You know, sometimes if we forget history, we repeat it. And as was pointed out, the civil rights movement, which was a nonviolent movement, but boy, the violence and the turmoil that came down on them has always been a black eye on this nation.
This is not the old civil rights, 60 civil rights discussion.
It's similar. And I wanted to point out one other thing, according to history, because the times we are in right now reflect the 1930s a great deal. And they were what they called the Bonus Marches.
This is not the 1930s. Speak to the ordinance, Mr. Embry.
I am speaking to it, and the Bonus Marches were World War I veterans.
Mr. Embry, your time is up. Thank you.
How dare you, chief! Cut me off! You know my rank!
Excuse me. I just want one question.
No, no.
Where is the mayor? Why can we never see the mayor? That's not the mayor. That is Mr. Reynolds. He doesn't even live at school. He lives in Garthways. When do we get to see the mayor? When? Can you tell me, please?
Chief.
Go ahead. Take me off. I don't care. Where is the mayor?
Thank you.
Sleeping with a warm blanket.
Okay.
Or...
Thank you. Okay, council. Ms. Pratt.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to wait for my comments so we had heard from the public. I think I'll echo what Dr. Wu often says. This is a hard one, on one hand, and on the other hand, we're facing a tough challenge today. And I guess when I look at our ordinances, I always ask myself, what problem are we trying to solve? Clearly, this ordinance doesn't solve the problem of homelessness. We aren't doing that with this ordinance. And so then what is the problem that we're addressing? And Ms. Myers mentioned living in Washington, D.C., which I did as well. And one thing that I was deeply troubled with in D.C. is often I would be walking down the street, and there would be homeless sleeping on the street. And it made me anxious about my safety, and I was always concerned about that. But I've never experienced that here. I find that, to their credit, I guess, the homeless have avoided me. They tend to be somewhere that most of us aren't going. I mean, I know where they might be, but it's not a standard place for us to go. And so I don't know that we have a personal safety problem that the average citizen fears for walking through parks or other situations. Though I would be very concerned if we ultimately did start having that. And I think that an ordinance of this nature has a good place. But I am concerned at this point that we're taking action on a problem that isn't really a major problem in our community. Ultimately, I heard the mention of the veterans who are homeless, and I -- my husband's stepfather is a disabled vet, and basically without my mother-in-law, he probably would have been on the streets as well. And I think about him trying to deal with a situation like this. And I think that at this point, I don't feel that we have a burning problem, and there might be some tweaking necessary to make sure that this ordinance deals with any future problem we might have. But I think that, especially at this time of year, I think that we ought to be talking about what we can do for the homeless over the winter. And then in the spring, maybe we should revisit this and say, all right, the new waterfront mission is open again, or something like that, and we should get our codes to reflect the way we want the city to look. Thank you.
Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. As I said earlier, this is one of those items that has been presented to us, and I do believe that we have a responsibility to look closer at it. I can certainly understand that an ordinance of some sort may be necessary, because whenever you do whatever we do, sometimes there will be people in the group that will require us to have rules. I don't have a problem with that, to clear things up so that it's clearly understood by all involved the do's and the don'ts. But I am experiencing a unique -- I'm having a unique experience here, simply because I grew up here in the '50s, and I remember ordinances that were put in place that we didn't even have an opportunity to address. They were just done. So I can feel what is being relayed, but I'm simply saying here that this is a document that we need to take a look at, tweak it, which I guess is the buzzword that we use these days. We want to tweak it. But that's what we need to do with it. We should not move forward with it in its original form. We need to look at it and see if we can do anything different. And then now I have a parliamentary procedure question. Back in the early '80s, I was at a local governmental meeting, and the chair had attempted to deny all the individuals in the audience the opportunity to speak that wanted to speak. And I remember investing $6 in a Sunshine book, Meeting in the Sunshine. And I found the clause in that book that stated that when a board is in session, that everyone who would like to speak has to be given an opportunity to do so. And I read that, and when I went back to the meeting, I carried the little pamphlet. It was a little pamphlet about that thick, and I carried it with me as a Bible, because if you're going to play the game, you'd better be aware of the rules.
Well, Mr. Gerald, I thank you for trying to point that out. Supreme Court of Florida has been very, very clear on this issue, and it involved Pensacola very specifically. That ruling came out last year. Public has got a right to participate. They've got a right to let their voice be known. It does not necessarily mean speaking in the public forum itself. But thank you. Ms. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. President. By the way, that was not a Supreme Court case. That was a first D.C. case, Court of Appeals. And that case may end up, or that issue may end up, before the Florida Supreme Court at some point.
Florida Supreme -- well, actually, you're right about the District Court of Appeals, and I'm not going to argue that with you. Supreme Court refused to hear it. It went to the Supreme Court. They refused to hear it.
Mr. President.
We're discussing the ordinance here, not free speech.
I wasn't finished.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The point that I made about that is because I have learned from experience that if something is brewing, the best way to diffuse it is to let people speak, get it off their chest. But if we let them leave here today with those same fears and angers bottled up inside, we're going to hear it again, if not today, tomorrow, or the next meeting that we have. I would be in favor of letting them get it off their chest. We can hear what their thoughts and concerns are, and then we can address them. But if we don't hear from them, we don't know what they're thinking. So it's important to let them get it out and deal with it once you've heard it. But if you guys want to rule it that way, go ahead. Thank you.
Ms. Myers.
I'm sorry. I cut you off, councilman. I want to talk about the ordinance. If you read this ordinance, it's almost -- if you take it literally, you reach a pretty ridiculous result, because what it actually prohibits is sleeping. In other words, I can go outside and lie down under some newspaper or cardboard or a bedroll as long as I'm not sleeping, because the conduct that it prohibits is sleeping. Now, let me tell you, from a law enforcement perspective, and I know a little bit, just a little bit, about law enforcement, because I was a volunteer parking enforcement officer for the sheriff's department for three and a half years. So officers are in a lot of times a very difficult situation, because they have to make split-second decisions about people's conduct. Now, if a person is, say, on a bench or on the ground, and they're covered up with a piece of newspaper or whatever, the officer, according to this, would have to make a determination as to whether or not they're sleeping. And if they're not sleeping, hey, you know, because what this addresses is sleeping, the act of sleeping. Now, this brings me up, brings me to how this affects ordinary citizens. Because we have events, and we're going to have a big park out there that invites people to come and sit on the ground. We hope we have enough people to come and, you know, sit on the ground. We have events, the flicks on Friday night, where people, you know, bring blankets and stuff and sit on the ground or lie down on the ground. So, you know, we allow people to engage in those types of activities. Now, I will tell you that my mother had a severe disability called narcolepsy. If my mother were sitting here, she would be asleep. All the movies she went to, she never saw an entire movie except for the Full Monty. And she was sitting on the edge of her seat the whole time. But if my mother were over at the Friday night flick, and she were -- we had a little blanket, my mom would be asleep, and she would be in violation of this ordinance. So I'm saying that this ordinance just doesn't make walking around sense. And I know what we're trying to achieve, and I'm kind of concerned that the city attorney wasn't involved in drafting the ordinance, because I thought that's what we paid our city attorney to do. And I think he's good at what he does. And if Mr. Messer and I could have had a conversation about this, maybe we could have come up with an ordinance that would have been acceptable. But anyway, I don't think that this ordinance in its current form achieves what we want to achieve. In fact, I think it does the opposite, and I think that it's going to be very difficult to enforce, because it's not just the homeless that will be affected, but I think that it will affect a lot of people, just plain, everyday citizens.
Ms. Dewise, when you spoke before, it wasn't directly to this issue. Mr. Spencer also wants to speak, but if you'd like to go first, go ahead.
I'll defer. I mean, I have to hand up with him.
I'm sorry.
It's hard to see me. It's okay. He's ready to speak.
You understand, right?
Yes, I do.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd just like to make a substitute motion, that we return this ordinance as written to staff and utilize the input of Attorney Mr. Jim Messer, so that we can then look at the product and revisit it.
Okay. And so what we're doing is to...
Refer it to staff.
Refer to staff with Messer's input.
So you're wanting to postpone this indefinitely or to a date certain?
I'm not specifying a date.
Mm-hmm. But so you're moving to lay the question on the table or postpone indefinitely? Now, I'll tell you, if you go by Roberts rules, laying on the table, I know when we say we tabled something, we've killed it, you know, but laying on the table is something that you really do intend to visit before. If you want to kill it, you postpone it indefinitely, so...
Now, my intention is not to postpone it indefinitely.
Okay. So Mr. Spencer's motion has been to lay this issue upon the table, to give the city attorney's office and the mayor's office to take in the several concerns of council and the people out here in the audience, retool it, and then bring it back to us. That's motion in a second.
And get a parliamentary question on that? On a tabling, to get it back on the agenda, we have to have a supermajority vote? Or when we refer it to...
You know, I know we've gone by that before, and that's what we've already done. We've done that before. You can help me out here, but I've looked through the latest council rules and procedures, and if it took five votes to pass it the first time or to send it back, it would only take five votes to come back before us again. Okay? Mr. Dewise. Mr. Spencer, you want to speak to your motion again?
No.
Okay. Ms. Dewise.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will actually complicate the situation, because I was going to ask the same question. When Mr. Messer had volunteered that he had not been party to this ordinance, I know that...
been party to this ordinance. I know that the mayor's office has been working on this and actually pulled it from another city. And I would have expected that it was reviewed by the city attorney. He is our attorney as well, and I would not want council to take action on something that the attorney had not reviewed and given his blessing to and made changes to. So I was going to withdraw my second. But I accept that as an amendment to this motion or if it looks to be a substitute motion.
It's a separate motion altogether.
All right.
Okay? And it's not debatable. So, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Item number four, sir.
Mr. President, item number four is creating Section 8, Tac 1, Tac 23 of the City Code prohibiting activities in city restrooms. The recommendation is that city council adopt the proposed ordinance creating Section 8, Tac 1, Tac 23 of the City Code to prohibit the misuse or deterioration of city-owned or provided restrooms intended for public use.
Okay, council, it's a pleasure.
Can I move that we do the same thing and have Mr. Messer weigh in on this one as well?
That's certainly a valid motion. So just state your motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
And I'll comment that I have fewer...
Free comment, though. State it clearly to the clerk.
Okay. I move that we table this motion and ask for Mr. Messer to review it. I have fewer concerns about this one. I sort of see the problem that we're trying to solve, but I do think that Councilwoman DeWes was correct, that as our attorney, we should expect Mr. Messer to review the ordinance. Thank you.
Okay. And this is not debatable, so...
Okay. I don't want to debate it. I just wanted to voice a concern and let Mr. Messer know that, you know, when we pass ordinances like this, I'm concerned that, like, if I'm at Bayview Park or some park and I'm working out and now I want to go to the restroom and change my clothes and, you know, brush my teeth, I mean, I want to make sure that what we do doesn't impact the public in a negative way. So anyway, that's all I wanted to say. And so...
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.